Add some laughs to your theater season. Steppenwolf presents Noises Off by Michael Frayn and directed by Tony Award-winning ensemble member Ana de Shapiro. A co-production with the Geffen Playhouse, The Daily Herald calls this play within a play "fast, furious, and ferociously funny, and there ain't a car or a Vin Diesel in sight." New City says the cast delivers "a seriously zany show," which I'm pretty sure means hella funny. Extended by demand through November 3rd only. The show must close November 3rd. Buy tickets starting at just 20 bucks at steppenwolf.org. Chicago's favorite holiday tradition is back at Lincoln Park Zoo and celebrating 30 years. Get your tickets now for Zoo Lights presented by ComEd and InvestCo QQQ and enjoy fun seasonal activities while strolling through your zoo under 3 million lights this holiday season. Zoo Lights will be back November 15th and run through January 5th. Tickets are just $7 to $10 with select free nights. Get your tickets at lpzoo.org/zoolights and learn more and secure your spot before it sells out. Today on CityCast Chicago, Mayor Johnson announces new school board nominees, Chicago's Fashion Week kicks off, and we're talking our favorite Halloween decorations. Breaking it all down with me, executive producer Simone Alisea. It's Tuesday, October 8th. I'm Jacoby Cochran and this is what Chicago is talking about. Morning Simone, how you feeling?
Hey, good morning Jacoby. I'm okay. How are you?
I'm doing good, man. I am going through the weekly flip-flopping on Bears emotion. This week Caleb threw for over 300 yards. He looked good in the pocket. The team overall performed well. Defense looked good, so it's a good start to my week. Unfortunately, that is what probably my like emotional equilibrium will look like for the next, what now? I don't know, 12, 13 weeks? I'm not gonna say longer than that because I don't want to get my hopes up.
I mean, that's, that's football season for you. What are you gonna do?
We had some big news to process over the weekend because last Friday, all seven members of Chicago's school board resigned. Now Simone, we had been preparing for some transition in the school board because we have for the first time ever, a forthcoming election for school board where us, the Chicagoans, were going to be picking 10 of the now 21 members of the board. The mayor still would retain the power to appoint those other 11. However, I don't think any of us were expecting any sort of movement on the members of the school board at the beginning of October. Obviously, there's been a, been a lot of drama in the world of education the last few weeks, but let's start there. Is this one of the likely outcomes you saw in the next couple of months?
It wasn't on my bingo board, I think. It's not kind of how I thought this was going down. Okay, so let's start with, uh, let's start with sort of what has been unfolding around CPS the past couple of weeks, the past couple of months here. We've talked about it on the show, but just to catch listeners up, right? There has been a debate at CPS over budget issues, right? There was a budget deficit in this school year. The district had to close the gap in some way and the mayor's office had really pushed for the district to take a short-term loan to close that gap and also to pay for teacher raises and other contract costs that will be upcoming, you know, as the Chicago Teachers Union negotiates its contract with the school district. The district opted not to do that, did not take that loan, and it has sort of come out over the past couple of months that that has really angered the mayor's office. And, you know, the mayor seems to have at some point asked for the resignation of CPS CEO Pedro Martinez. And, uh, you know, then this announcement on Friday, a joint statement from the school board and the mayor's office that said all seven current members of the Chicago school board would resign by the end of the month.
I mean, it's doubly interesting because all, at least six of these seven members of the board were appointed by Mayor Brandon Johnson back in July of 2023.
Right. So then to get to, so that's sort of the, what is happening in the world of CPS. Now comes the part that gets a little bit confusing. It wasn't really clarified in a press conference on Monday, but it comes to sort of like, what is the power of the mayor and what is the relationship between the mayor and the school board, right? As you said, in July 2023, a few months after Brandon Johnson took office, he mostly cleared out the school board that had been there, uh, you know, appointed six new members. And that, that was sort of, uh, expected. There was an expectation that when you get a new mayor into office, um, you know, that's the whole idea of mayoral control, right?
This is one of the quickest ways to implement your vision for Chicago public schools. And alongside this board, they started in many ways to set the foundation of what Mayor Johnson's agenda would be in terms of reinvesting in neighborhood schools, uh, making it clear that they wanted to move away from sort of enrollment-based funding to equity-based and a need-based funding. They wanted to remove police officers from schools and because he had a appointed board, a board that he still maintained control over, all of those agenda points got set. Some of that movement started, started happening.
Yes, and I think there, the expectation up until this point had sort of been that like that transition would happen when the transition happens, right? In November, uh, Chicago voters will elect 10 school board members to this newly constituted school board. The mayor will then be able to appoint the other 11. This resignation announcement, it comes down on Friday. Johnson quickly says that, you know, we're gonna announce the new appointees on Monday. And so he announces the new names, he announces actually six names, doesn't announce all seven. Um, and when pushed by reporters on, you know, what does this have to do with all of the strife that has been playing out over the front pages of the media over the past several months? Johnson essentially tried to say it didn't really have to do with those specific things. He did not, he would not speak specifically to A, the whether or not Pedro Martinez should keep his job, and he would not speak to B, should the school district take out a short-term loan to cover, uh, the budget gap. Uh, and instead said that this move was always kind of part of the transition to this hybrid school board that Chicago will have when they are, you know, by the time they are seated in January after this November election and that these six people, these six names sort of could be part of that, but he also didn't leave out the idea that they might not be, that there might be 11 other people who he decides to appoint pending the outcome of the election in November.
One of the things I appreciate the entire time you and I have been having this conversation for the last few weeks is we've acknowledged is that a lot of this narrative creation around ongoing conflict between CPS and City Hall, a lot of this was driven by unnamed sources. Like, we trust our colleagues, uh, many of our colleagues across Chicago media, that this is what was bubbling behind closed doors. And Mayor Johnson at every opportunity to clarify this narrative over the last few weeks, you know, has lent on, we don't talk personnel. He has lauded the, the, the school board at the time for moving steadfast with his agenda. He's constantly said, everything is on the table to get us to a point of trying to fully fund our schools, make sure that we got librarians and social workers and nurses. And again, we've wondered, okay, well, is there any conflict? Because at least I respect, he has not thrown any public dirt on CPS CEO Pedro Martinez's name during that Monday press conference. When pushed to, to further clarify if there's any ongoing conflict between them, he did not offer any clarity. He didn't throw any dirt on the name of any of the resigning members of the school board. And yet, when that move happened on Friday, based on all the information we had, it's sent what felt like a clear signal that, hey, y'all don't want to move forward with my agenda. Y'all have helped me to this point, but I need some people who are going to, for what we know, move forward on getting CPS CEO Pedro Martinez up out of here and taking out this loan to pay for all of these things you listed earlier. And on Monday, he was given the opportunity to be like, yep, this move that everyone feels is to do these exact things, that's what they are for. And yet, he didn't offer that clarification. He just said, hey, this is within my authority. Everything's on the table. We don't talk personnel and all of these, you know, questions that are similarly worded to get to a very specific answer, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna avoid.
Well, and here's my issue with this, Jacoby, is, you know, Brandon Johnson repeatedly said, you know, I have the authority as mayor of Chicago to appoint the school board. Yes, yes, you do. That's great. Uh, but what I don't appreciate is hiding behind process without explaining the decision-making that happens within that process, right? So, you know, yes, the Chicago mayor has the authority to appoint a school board as vacancies arise, right? Like, yes, that is within the power of the mayor's office. However, uh, when you're then asked like, oh, does this have to do with this specific budget direction that you'd like the district to take? Does this have to do with this specific personnel issue? Um, again, a department head, uh, does it? And if so, what is hap, you know, what has this department head done or not done that you would, that you want to see different? Does it have to do with some other specific action that the board has or has not taken in recent months? And then to say, well, those are all under the purview of the board and therefore it's up to the board to decide who the next, uh, CEO will be. It's up to the board to decide what the budget, uh, direction will be.
And that like, again, if the board comes out, if, you know, city council, 41 of the 50 say they want to have some control or they want to hold a hearing before this moves forward, and the mayor all but scoffed at that and pretty much threw his hands and was like, good for them. They can have as many means as they want. I do not care, but if this board goes through this vetting process, if they go through and their first actions then are to relieve Martinez of his job and to move forward with taking out this loan, and then the mayor comes out and goes, well, I mean, you know, everything was on the table and that's what they wanted to do. It just, it, stand on it. It takes the gusto out of the moment, even if it's all implied politically and you just don't want to be the bad guy that has to like, say, I wanted someone fired and say, I wanted it to take out a potentially fiscally risky choice to, you, again, even if for all good reasons, we all agreeing that the current state of CPS and its funding is not up to par. However, if you're not just gonna stand on that in this press conference, you could have spun this as a, you know, a urgent political move necessary to move forward your vision and it feels like you kind of walked that back a little.
Well, and that's the thing, during that press conference, he did kind of give that reasoning of, you know, we need to invest in CPS schools. CPS schools have been under-invested in. There's been this history of cuts. There's been this history of, you know, uh, always sort of taking away, pulling away when we should be building up, building more. You know, obviously sort of overhanging all of this is Chicago thinks the state should pony up more money for Chicago public schools. Uh, and that just hasn't materialized. It hasn't happened. They weren't able, they weren't that successful in Springfield. If Mayor Johnson wants to play this game of chicken with Springfield and say, no, this, you know how much I care about investing in schools? I am getting rid of a school board. I'm bringing a new one in and I'm directing them to take this super risky, the super risky financial loan, uh, because that's how much I care about it. You know what I mean? Then, okay, at least I know, at least I know then what's happening. My issue fundamentally is Brandon Johnson ran on, you know, breaking the status quo, right? He ran, and he ran on a campaign of transparency. This is fundamentally not transparent to me. Why are you making leadership decisions the way those decisions are being, you know, and what specifically, what actions are you expecting of your appointees? And why isn't the current situation, which again, as we, as we previously said, you appointed six of the seven current board members. Why is it not working out? What specifically is happening? Um, and that lack of transparency to me is sort of the, 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 the issue here. You know, you alluded to the fact that, uh, a majority of city council members, over 40 city council members signed an open letter saying that the, you know, this is essentially, this is all happening really fast and the council wants to weigh in that there's a, again, they also question sort of the transparency here.
That's been a lot of their relationship recently. They're saying, you're using your power to move unilaterally. We would like to talk about this. And him going, whether it's ShotSpotter, whether it's this school board decision, you can have all the meetings you want, but I'm, I'm gonna do essentially what I want to do with the power that I have.
Which, how is that different from mayors in Chicago's past, right? That's the other thing I think here that, that feels, um, Chicagoans have, have seen this kind of thing before. Uh, you know, and again, I think Johnson and his supporters would say, yes, but not to the ends that Johnson is, you know, using that authority. Um, you know, the six people that Johnson announced on Monday, Olga Batista, who is a Southeast Side environmental activist, Makyla Blaze, uh, political consultant, current, um, chief of staff to a Cook County Commissioner, uh, Mary Gardner, who's a West Side activist, Reverend Mitchell Johnson, Debbie Pope, who's a retired teacher, former CTU staffer, uh, and Frank Thomas, who has served, uh, on a local school council and is also a, um, labor and political organizer. Um, you know, Johnson, again, did not make it sort of imply that these people maybe will move on to the partially, to the hybrid school board, but maybe won't. Um, and again, overall of this is, uh, you know, ballot, early voting has started. Ballots are out. People are voting on, on the school board as we speak.
Less than a month from Election Day.
The other thing, I think the other like caveat in all of this is, right? Brandon Johnson, before he ever became mayor, advocated for an elected school board.
For sure.
And this is partly why, right? It's, it's so that the whole idea of an elected school board is that the process is more transparent and Chicagoans have more say in who's on the school board, who's running the schools. This is my issue of using the process to obscure the decision-making, to obscure whose will is being done.
Going to the orthodontist doesn't have to be spooky. Often it can be stressful trying to find the proper time, funds, and doctor for your family's orthodontic treatment. Luckily, Orthodontic Experts is where the best value, quality, and accessibility align. Their orthodontists guide you through treatment with kindness and professionalism. They provide exceptional orthodontic care with various options, including traditional metal, gold, ceramic, and lingual braces and clear liners. Orthodontic Experts accepts most major insurances and even creates personalized payment plans for you. And they offer evening and weekend availability that will easily fit into your busy schedule. And the best part is that the clinics are always located conveniently near you. Why wonder? Find out if orthodontic treatment is right for your family with a no-cost consultation at Orthodontic Experts. This episode is sponsored by BetterHelp. Back when I was in college, going to therapy was not something me and my homies openly discussed. So when I attended my initial sessions, I kept it entirely to myself and honestly, I kind of felt like I was wearing a mask with my friends and family. Luckily, in the years since, I've watched more and more people de-stigmatize the conversation and remove the taboo from therapy. However, for many, they still don't know exactly where to go if they are considering giving talk therapy a try. And if that sounds like you, try BetterHelp. It's entirely online, designed to be convenient, flexible, and suited to your schedule. All you gotta do is fill out a brief questionnaire to get matched with a licensed therapist and you can switch therapists anytime for no additional charge. Take off the mask with BetterHelp. Visit betterhelp.com/citycast to get 10% off your first month. That's betterhelp, H E L P, dot com slash citycast. Simone, after a huge announcement earlier this year, Chicago's inaugural Fashion Week has finally arrived. It kicks off October 9th and runs through the 20th and features 50-plus events, including 10 major runway shows. Uh, I mean, usually when like Fashion Week comes up, uh, like the eyes of social media turn towards New York, turn towards Paris, like, I don't know. Do you think it's a big deal that Chicago is like having its own really interconnected Fashion Week, bringing in old events and new events?
I, I gotta tell you, when I was first looking this up, I, I'm more like Andy in the first half of The Devil Wears Prada. Like, I don't really understand the fashion industry or sort of all the different.
All of the choices that ended up with you wearing that particular color.
Exactly, exactly. Um, so, you know, I think what's interesting about, and part of the reason that they, uh, call this, um, the inaugural Fashion Week is that this is a Fashion Week that is being put together by Chicago's fashion industry, um, by the, the people who actually design, um, and are on the cutting edge of, of, you know, of fashion in Chicago. Um, and I think this is interesting for a few reasons. I was reading that, um, you know, back in the mid, early aughts, uh, former mayor, Richard M. Daley, really, uh, tried to create some kind of like this, like a city-run kind of Fashion Week. It was called Fashion Focus, um, but it never really took off. It never really got like true industry buy-in. Like, yes, they were showcasing local designers and like local boutiques and stuff would come and make purchases, but they weren't getting like really, really big industry players to like take a look at the designs that were coming out of Chicago. And I think that is what this Fashion Week that starts on, uh, Wednesday, um, is kind of trying to do. And I mean, the marketing behind it, just the photos, the, the events themselves. I mean, this looks like it's gonna be a big, high-end, uh, production, um, in the way that I know Chicago can do. It is kind of shocking to me that, that Chicago hasn't been able to do this, given, you know, obviously we have other artists who are here, who are doing incredible work, um, so why not, why not fashion?
Yeah, I recently saw the sit-down that La Roche had during the Chicago Humanities Festival, uh, touring their new book. Uh, it talked about, you know, they grew up on the South Side of Chicago, talking about how Chicago played into their upbringing and their growth as, as they call it, a fashion or image architect. Uh, I think that's a fantastic title to put on a business card.
For any listeners who maybe don't recognize that name, some names you maybe do recognize that, that La Roche worked with, uh, Zendaya, Celine Dion, uh, Anya Taylor-Joy.
Uh, I recently saw an interview with Joe Fresh talking about what it's meant like for him to be building brands in the city of Chicago, even as that's taken him further and further away from the city over the last decade plus. And for me, as somebody who, I can't say that I like know a lot about Chicago's fashion industry, but for me, my like relationship to Chicago fashion is very similar to other Chicago art forms and that's just, there is such a organic people coming together, working to like put up their own shows, people collaborating to open their own stores. The amount of Chicago fashion designers that I have, like just people who put out t-shirts, put out hoodies, put out, like do denim alterations, the amount that I have in my closet is, honestly, it's probably about 70% of the things that I own at this point because I just see my friends or the people who are friends of friends like dropping new coats and so I buy it. And, and so what I do know is that the, the hustle culture of Chicago's, at least streetwear fashion industry, uh, is extremely strong. Like watching my boy Ron Louie go from, you know, us being in the same high school together to, you know, getting a stamp from people like Virgil Abloh before he passed away to, to working with major brands in this city. Uh, just did an expo with, with Coach a couple of months ago down at their, at their Loop store. And so they're really, it feels very similar to like Chicago's improv theater community, artist community. It's just like, we gonna work together to put our own things together and then we gonna market the hell out of them as the coolest things you ever seen.
I think another thing that you mentioned too about sort of the openness of Chicago's art scene as a whole, you know, I was reading actually a perspective on, uh, Fashion Week in the Daily Northwestern about how, you know, unlike at Paris Fashion Week, New York Fashion Week, which it can be highly exclusive, right? It sounds like Chicago Fashion Week, many of the events will be, um, free, actually open to the public, although RSVP is required. And, uh, you know, this, this article talked about how student designers, and there are lots of design schools here in Chicago, will be able to access high-end, cutting-edge fashion shows, um, in a way that would be a lot harder in a place like New York, Milan, Paris, right? Um, and I think that is so, when we talk about like what is quintessentially Chicago about something, I think access is a big one. Like, there is such a culture of art and art sharing, um, in this city. I'm curious, Jacoby, if you were to sort of talk about Chicago style, Chicago fashion, sort of visually, what are like the key hallmarks for you, do you think?
That's a good question. Um, I don't know, I'd, I'd been thinking about that coming into this conversation and two words that I kept going back to, one was comfortable. Like, Chicagoans, like whether we're talking about people who like put their shit on, like people who are, you know, wearing designer or wearing things that they've designed, they've curated, whether it was thrifted, whether it cost a bunch of money or whatever, there still seems to be a, like an expression of comfort in Chicago style. And so you see a lot of people, you know, wearing hoodies and styling hoodies and styling oversized jerseys. I see, I saw Chicago is doing like oversized pants, you know, back when people were slowly coming out of skinny jeans. Uh, I feel like Chicago, because of just how, you know, segregated and spread out the city is, you can really, depending on where you are, it doesn't feel like the entire city is a runway, maybe similar to like a New York. It doesn't feel like people are dressing to, to the sacrifice of their own personal style or like practical comfort.
I think, I think maybe beyond comfort, the word I might use is like grounded, like grounded in like the reality of life. Like, I think, you know, people, I have heard people sort of say like, oh, Chicago isn't fashionable in the way that New York, London, Paris, uh, where you see people walking down the street and it feels like, you know, you're in the downtown, those downtowns and it feels like you're on a runway, as you say.
It, it feels like it's, it's, it's irrespective, the word I'm thinking about, but maybe of like the weather. Like when I was in like Paris in the winter, I was still seeing outfits that I've seen in pictures of Paris during the summer. Like, Chicago kind of put their hoodies away during the summer. We, we kind of put our big coats away. New York be out here in Tams and puffer coats in the summer because that's just a part of the aesthetic.
Yeah, I think there, there's sort of a practicality, that Midwestern practicality, um, that comes through.
We will drop links in our show notes so that you can plan out your Chicago Fashion Week calendar. And please let us know your thoughts. What do you think represents quintessential Chicago style? And obviously is Chicago. And so that can mean anything based on where you are in the city. We want to hear your thoughts at 773-780-0246.
Hi, this is David Plotz of CityCast. Have you thought about a gift for yourself this year? One that has the power to help you grow and learn and become a better version of yourself? Give yourself the gift of language by getting Babbel. With quick 10-minute lessons handcrafted by language experts, Babbel gets you talking a new language in three weeks because talking is the key to really knowing a language. And that's how Babbel approaches it. It's designed for real conversation. So I have a trip to France planned with my girlfriend. Was it inspired by the Olympics? Yes, it was. And it's given me the chance to revive my old high school French and it's so fun to catch back up with the vocabulary I'd forgotten, to remember all the food. For example, I'm in a lesson on ingredients, so I'm gonna make crepes with butter and sugar. Avec sucre et de beurre salé, on va se regaler. We're gonna have a feast. Learned this great new French expression too. J'en ai leau à la bouche. That means I have water in the mouth. That means it's mouthwatering. Love it. Love French. Anyway, Babbel gets you talking and studies from Yale and Michigan State University and other leading universities prove that it works. So here is a special holiday deal for CityCast listeners. Right now, get up to 60% off your Babbel subscription, but only for CityCast listeners at babbel.com/citycast. Get up to 60% off at babbel.com/citycast. S L B A B B E L dot com slash citycast. Rules and restrictions may apply.
Before we get out of here, Simone, something, uh, you and I have had seemingly different experiences on, but that is the sudden pop-up of Halloween decorations, not only around the city or on our own blocks, but even in our own buildings. Uh, tell me about the, the recent additions of Halloween directions, uh, near you.
Okay, so I live in a big building. It's kind of a newer, like rehabbed building and they usually put up decorations for different holidays, you know? And like, so I knew, you know, and so when I saw, they hung these little bats that are pretty cute. They hung up the little like cobwebby stuff in the hallways. And then one day I came downstairs to grab some food delivery and I opened my door and I heard this sound. And I about, I about jumped out of my skin. So this is like a little, I don't know, maybe like four-foot kind of crone witch figure that moves and its eyes light up and it like swirl, swivels around on its peg. And every time the door, the front door to my building opens or closes, it activates. And I am deeply distressed. I hate it. I, uh, it also bothers me because that our lobby is lit 24/7. And so like, it's not like it's in hiding, like you can see it. I, yeah, I'm very disappointed. Uh, I really don't like it. I want, I want to like it. I want to be into it, but it is deeply irritating.
I feel like one that reminds me of this like haunted hostel I stayed in, in Argentina, in which they had just like mannequins everywhere dressed up as like Freddy and Jason. And I was always coming around the corner worried someone was just gonna be standing and wanting them to like play a practical joke. And so like every time I saw a mannequin, I just like slapped it just off, just off GP, just in case. If you is gonna try and scare me, you gonna get this quick slapping first. But one thing I am realizing as I'm seeing the decorations pop up around me is, again, I feel like in our guide to October, we all came off as like Halloween curmudgeons, like we do not enjoy it. And when I see it, just like the cliche Halloween decorations, so like a witch and some black cats and some pumpkins, I'm like, no. But I did walk out of my building and see this, like assortment of skeletons, like hilariously placed on this balcony. One was like hanging off the edge. One was just like sitting in a lawn chair. The other one was just like hanging over the railing. And I do appreciate decorations that are like, versus just like Halloween vomit on your lawn, like ones that tell a story that are a joke versus just like a prop, like setup. And so I, I laughed the moment I saw it and noticed all of the different skeletons. And I was like, okay, maybe, maybe I'm not completely, maybe I'm not completely anti Nightmare Before Christmas.
I love a skeleton scene, Jacoby. So my building has also set up, there's several different decorations. We, we also managed to get one of those like giant Home Depot 12-foot skeletons. It's in the, like back by the, by the parking lot. But they also set up near the offices, uh, there's like a, a chair and like a little coffee table set up. And they sat a skeleton in the chair and there's like a dog skeleton waiting. And then they put like a little, it's cute. It looks like a little scene of like someone in a waiting room who has died waiting. And that I love. I think that's great. It doesn't interrupt me when I'm going to get my delivery and affect me every time I open the door.
We want to see y'all pictures. If you are decorating in your apartment or in your neighborhood, or there's somebody on your block who just got some decorations you can't help but share, please take a picture and send it to us at 773-780-0246 and you may see your picture show up in our newsletter. If you're hearing that and you're thinking to yourself, newsletter? What you talking about? I just thought y'all had the podcast. No, 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 my friends. Go to chicago.citycast.fm and there you will find our Hey Chicago newsletter. Every single day, Monday through Friday, directly to your inbox, we're giving you amazing articles. We're giving you neighborhood and walking guides. We're giving you pictures of the city and so much more. Trust me, uh, you won't regret it. I gotta give a huge thank you to our executive producer, Simone Ali-Seyah, for sitting down with me this morning.
Hey, thanks, Jacoby.
One more thing before we get out of here. Some good news. You can catch me at the Wonder Museum this Friday for another edition of Karaoke Storytellers. Tickets are going fast, so find the link in the show notes. As always, we appreciate you for listening and reading. We gonna be back bright and early tomorrow. We'll talk to you then. Peace. Funny, my brother came over on Sunday to watch, uh, the game with me. And he was talking about how everyone had been commenting on the outfit he had on. And I was like, it's because you got on 1993 Cabrini Couture. This man had on a 90 Bulls starter jacket, some Mitchell and Ness Bulls shorts. He had some mics on, like OG Jordan Ones. And just for the kicker, he had a Shawn Michaels 1990s, like Survivor Series hat on and these like nice long gold earrings. And I was like, bro, you look like you standing outside of Cabrini Green. And, and everyone had been telling him that in the hours and to him leading into the house. If we want to talk about specific Chicago subgenres, Cabrini Couture is still one of them.